I don't, I haven't heard anything about Donna unless she told me months ago and then I forgot.
I don't recall her saying that she wasn't going to be here, but. I do not know. You, you tell me when you want to start up.
Fran, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Great. And see us, I hope.
Yes, I can see you. I see a big gap there.
I know. It's like I designed it. You all sit way over there.
Kelsey is going to wrap our knuckles with a ruler.
That's right. Start throwing stuff. I have some extra name tags to toss if I need to. Um, go ahead. Whenever.
Pull up the agenda. All right. Um. Welcome. Instructions on exiting the building, the event of emergency out that door to the left or out that door to the right. Agenda additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items. Hearing none. Um, I know we have one gentleman in the audience. Do we have anybody else online besides, um, Sue? Okay. Well, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. We have one. Yes.
Hi, Ryan Doyle. Um, this doesn't. It, it doesn't quite fit with something that happened later.
Ryan, can you come to speaker? I mean, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so in relation to the discussion later about possibly naming a street. My question doesn't relate to the name itself, but really. Where that street is coming from and sort of the reasoning behind. Adding a street there, which would seem to complicate traffic a lot as well as pedestrian safety.
Okay. Um, I know that we do have that on our agenda to talk about the street name. I don't know if it was on our name. I don't know if it was. It was not on the agenda to talk about the road itself, I believe.
No, it wasn't. But what I can answer is that that street has been on the official map for a long time. Um, it's not something that was recently added. Um, it continues north and, and makes the Williston Road Dorset Street intersection a four-way intersection. Um, and then turns to the east. Um, once it hits those, the new buildings that are being built there, it turns east and. Um, the official map street eventually connects to Patchen Road. Um, but it require, it relies on redevelopment or, or additional development along that route. Um, for sort of additional construction by private entities. So that's an official map street that was adopted the last time the official map. Or it may be predating the last official map update. I just know it hasn't been re- um, added recently.
Yeah, um, yeah, I've seen that on the official map. Um, I brought this up quite a few times at other meetings, most of city council. I'm really concerned about that intersection. It's a very problematic intersection. It's currently in a T formation. There's six lanes in each direction. If we're being conservative, I think some could argue seven lanes. Uh, in the eastbound approach. And when you go from three to four. You create many more movements that need to happen within a light, light cycle. Um, it also makes it much harder for pedestrians and bikers to access an area as you keep beefing up an intersection. Um, there are alternatives to where. A parallel streak could come out. There was a light over to the east that is yet to be developed. And I think long term, it would really serve our residents. Um, both in terms of safety and cost to be thinking about how to avoid making that intersection. Busier and more dangerous and rather getting all of the hotel traffic from all three hotels. To the other intersection, uh, with a safer crossing in the future as we get there. Right now they have to exit where they're able to, which is where they historically had a curb cut. But actually making a street run through there is going to make the traffic pattern much more difficult to move vehicles. And pedestrians and bikers and make it less safe for pedestrians and bikers. So I'd like you guys to be aware of that going forward, especially since when we look at the official map. Um, there will be some evaluation of that in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Announcements and staff report. Any commissioner announcements? Kelsey?
Um, just that we are kind of chugging along in the background with a few different projects. We're working on, um. Putting out and drafting and then putting out a request for proposals and RFP. Um, for equity toolkit work that we're hoping to be starting up. We had an additional meeting of kind of a core group of staff. Um, this is the municipal planning grant we were awarded last year, um, to develop a better framework toolkit, um, tool. For designing our outreach for planning projects, um, and then being able to extend that throughout, throughout the city. So. That is moving along and, um, otherwise just kind of working away. Nothing else really big has happened in the last week or so.
Duncan, I do have one question. I don't know. When's the right time to ask it, but it's about the email that you sent out. Yesterday, I think it was about, uh, communication among counselors or commissioners. And I just want to clarify to make sure that my understanding is correct. It's my understanding that I can have conversations with other commissioners. As long as A, there is not a quorum in the conversation, which includes either in the direct conversation or through daisy chaining. But other than that. Your, your email almost sounded like we shouldn't be talking to each other at all. And I just wanted to be clear about that.
So, no. So the, the, the fear that I have from a, you know, protecting the city's interest. Perspective is when an email is sent that includes substance of an agenda item, that there will be responses to it. So sending an email out. One way is technically fine, but it makes me very nervous that someone will then send an email reply all back. And then we're not fine. So I prefer, and I think our best practices would be to not be sharing substance. In a all commission email. Um, if you had a particular thing that you wanted to email Donna about, fine. If you want it, you know. If you wanted to email the whole group about, um, changing a meeting date, probably also fine. You're starting to edge up into ifiness. Um, so what I would consider our best practices is that if you have anything that you would like to share. With the group, um, that it go to Paul and myself. Um, and you can also CC Jessica on that because that does not create a quorum and she keeps her in the loop of everything. Um, and then we can decide, is that something that needs to go in a packet that's available to the public? It's something, is it something that we can email? We determine that we can email it around without a concern. Um, can we email it around with that special like? Do not reply to this email kind of language. Um, so the safest thing is if you have something that you want to share. Send it to us and we can send it out. And that it would even include things, and I'm probably being conservative about this, but that's just part of my job. Um, you know, you see an article in the Atlantic about affordable housing or something and you want to send the link to everybody. Send it to me and I'm happy to send it out. Um, it's just a lot safer that way.
So in this particular case, you were just concerned that nothing actually happened.
Nothing, there was nothing actually wrong with sending the email technically. It was, that email. Was a of, on the subject of one of our agenda items and is in the core of what the planning commission does. So. If anyone else had replied all, we would have had an issue. That's all.
I have another question. Is the new draft of the plan now on the, on the city website or are you still working on it?
Nope. We, we decided because our communications director was about this close to, um, finishing a formatted version that we would just kind of polish up the formatted version. And then the fat would go to, um, city council and be published on the website. And it'll be published on the website as soon as we have it ready. Um, the city council would then get it in their packet, but they have other stuff that goes in their packet. So it may be delayed in the packet, but it'll go up as soon as we have it.
Thank you. All right. Um, on to number five, LDR amendments, public hearing. Um, so. It looks like you would like us to do each one of these separately. Is that the way?
That's my suggestion, just as a, um, we had a, was it, it was either the last time we had a group of amendments or the one before that there was a little bit of confusion about which one are we talking about? Um, so it's just cleaner when they're not terribly related to each other. You know, it's not the same big subject area to go one by one. It's a little bit. Onerous with making motions of opening and closing hearings and all of that, but it's just a lot simpler. Um, to know exactly what everybody is, that everyone's talking about the same thing.
Okay. Do we need to state what the LDR is or the change is first, or does we can make the motion without that?
Um, if you just read the title in, in bold and then open the, open the hearing, that would, the move, move to open the hearing, that would be fine.
Michael, do you want to start with the first LDR?
Item five is LDR amendments, public hearing. Uh, I moved to open the public hearing on the amendments to land development regulations, number LDR twenty-three dash oh-three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if we have no feedback?
Then you're welcome to close the hearing.
Hearing no feedback?
There is one more member of the public online.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, Ashley. Were you looking to comment on this agenda item or something later?
I'm just trying to catch up. Um, is it too late or too early to comment on, uh, the Pizza Hut? Conversion?
Um, so that is in the hands of, uh, the development review board, which is not this body. This is the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Never mind that I'm here to watch and learn.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're always welcome.
And if the audience members have any feedback on them? No? Okay. Um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on that amendment?
Close the public hearing on the amendment, the land development regulations, number LDR dash twenty-three dash oh-three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, just you're welcome to either vote on them individually or do the hearings for all three and then vote for all three, whichever you feel comfortable with. Again, maybe cleaner just to vote on this one, especially because there was no discussion, but.
And so, um. Need to, uh, move to approve. We need another motion to move to approve. Okay.
I'll move to approve amendments, the land development regulations, LDR twenty-three dash oh-three. To approve the planning commission report and to submit both to the city council.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right. That is unanimous. I'm sorry, Fran. Did you said I, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, right. Sorry. All right. So on to the second amendment, um, LDR twenty-three oh-four. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing on that amendment?
I move to open the public hearing on. The amendments, the LDR, you know, land development regulations, number twenty-three dash oh-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe there, there was one change on that one. It was noted in the packet. Uh, I think it was fairly well explained.
Um, I know, I just noted in the packet, um, our previous draft had said primary or secondary facade. Um, but we, we ran that through our development review staff and it was pointed out, um. And logically so that that could result in a building only having. Having no side that meets the primary facade requirements and only having the one side that meets the secondary. Um, or having possibly two secondaries, but still no primary. And so the intention of was to, or. We removed or secondary, just those two words, um, to require that. Facade that is being considered the frontmost facade facing the street on those L-shaped corners to meet the primary facade requirements. Um, they're very similar, primary and secondary facade. It's just like, you know, a few more requirements, another half step higher. Um. It has some of the stuff we were talking about before about the setbacks on, on higher floors and, and things like that. So.
Okay. Um, do we have any feedback on that amendment?
So removing the words, uh, or secondary. That means that if there's on the other side of the L, there is a primary, it will end up being two primaries.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. Um, technically, if there was a primary on the other side, there would be street frontage on the other side, and therefore you wouldn't be needing to use this exception for the. That first side. So you could have a less, a, a less. Slightly different facade on, on the corner side because you met the requirements on the street facing side on the other side. This is intended to be for those that it's not possible to have frontage on the other side.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, hearing no feedback on that amendment. Uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on that amendment?
I move to close the public hearing on. Land Development Regulation, LDR twenty-three oh-four.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, and.
And.
So we need a movement to pass that on to the council.
Can I, can we move to approve the amendments and. Um, approve the planning commission report and submit that twenty-three oh-four to the city council.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Two down, one to go. Uh, LDR twenty-three oh-five, minor and technical amendments. Uh, I know we did talk about this one, but. Um, do I have a motion to open the public hearing on that one?
Subiru. Second.
Second. Uh, and any discussion on that one? No.
It's so small. It's hardly worth it.
We're blowing through the motions here. Do I have a motion to close the hearing of that one?
I'm moved to close the public hearing on LDR twenty-three oh-four.
Twenty-three oh-five.
Oh, five, I beg your pardon.
Yes. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I believe that was unanimous.
I move to approve the amendments to land development regulation, LDR twenty-three dash oh-five. To approve the planning commission report and to submit both to city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Fran, we'll go that one to Fran. Fran gets credit for that one.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I believe that was unanimous, Kelsey.
That's the business.
Um, okay. So we. Are through number five and on to number six discussion. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We just did number six. Sorry. Well, number seven, preview of upcoming LDR discussions. Um, Kelsey, I'll let you.
I am screen sharing. I'm going to scroll through. Little bit. Um. This is just to, to, this was in a previous packet, but we didn't reach it because it was the public hearing night for the city plan. Um, so it's identical text. So if you've read it before, you, you already know what we're doing, what's going on. Um, it is to lay out a bit of the plan for how we're going to be updating the, uh, form-based code in the next year or so. Uh, with the intention of making sure that everybody on the commission is on the same page about what's kind of coming up and what's high priority or what's kind of moving. A little bit farther down the road. Um, so the phase one is the, uh, what we just did. Um, the very immediate needs, there is a development agreement related to the L-shaped roads. Um, amendment. So thank you for moving that forward. That moves that forward and meets the city's obligations under that agreement. Um, the next thing is these phase two and what we're calling phase two incremental improvements to the form-based code. And these are a handful of things. Um, one is the, this was brought to the commission probably a year and a half ago. The east end of Market Street, so Market Street and Heinsberg Road, there's that undeveloped side on the north side or underdeveloped. Sort of underdeveloped and then undeveloped pieces of land on the north side. Um. Considering some transx zone and official map changes in that area to make it more, um. Appropriately developable, um, than it is currently. That is related to. The design updates that we're going to be talking about a little bit later. Because there's some talk, discussion about, um, where the line between the T-three. Transit zones and the T-four is what that transition should look like. Um, how that relates to a potential additional street to be added to the official map. Going north from Market Street and then east to Heinsberg Road. Um. And more development in that, that area that, as I said, was brought by our community development director. To the planning commission about a year and a half ago in concept. And so that's still where we are is, is sort of in concept, but that will be coming to the. Planning commission in the next, these are all things that we're scheduling approximately in the next nine months. Um, additionally, we are looking to update the traffic overlay district and, um, establish a related transportation demand management system. Um, there is, there's some significant clunkiness to our current, um, traffic overlay district and what it means, especially for redevelopment. If a. If a site was, was established and approved for a certain use, it comes with a certain number of trips, especially for peak hour trips. So. Kind of rush hour, how many people are coming and going. Um, that can actually really hamstring redevelopment. If you're trying to do something that. Happens to have a lot more trips during the peak hour. It also doesn't, um. Reflect any potential private sector investment in alternative transportation options. Um, you know, investing in a bus stop, you know, shelter or adding additional bike parking or, you know, there's a lot of other things that can be included. So this is related to working out, um, a bit of, it's, it's basically a point system for new, for redevelopment and new development to meet. Their requirements by doing a combination of things, not necessarily meeting vehicle trips for vehicle trips. Because it's currently very passenger vehicle focused and we're looking to move it away from that. And use it as a tool to have the private sector invest more in, um, other transportation opportunities. Um, updating design standards in form-based code. That's again what we'll be talking about a little bit later. That is going to be involving, um, bringing on an architectural consultant. So. It's, there's some lead time with that and we're, the city is intending to use that consultant to, um. Really sort of ground test how feasible certain things are. And if, you know, if you do X to a regulation, then Y will result. Or if you regulate this too tightly, then you'll get all buildings that look exactly the same because you've, you've. Closed everything down too much or the overlay between this standard and this standard actually make a very small Venn diagram that you can comply with both. Um, so bringing in an architectural consultant to kind of be able to read those regulations and point out. This is where you can get more flexibility. This is where you can make, get the changes that you want. Um, and so that having a consultant pushes that out a bit because consultants obviously need time to do their work. So that's again, in the next nine months to have that coming through. Uh, and that's the conversation we would start having today about. That, an, an architectural consultant needs direction for what are you looking for in the end to be able to figure out how, how you get there. So. That's, that'll lead into our later, um, agenda item.
So the architectural consultant will be working with us?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I was going to raise that today. And, uh, have you got a, an architect in mind?
Um, there are a few that are, that people have, um, proposed. The trick is that you want to have someone who knows. Chittenden County and knows sort of Vermont and the area to a certain extent, but you also don't want anyone who has two irons in the fire in city center anyway. Um, because you don't, you want to avoid any, you know, conflict of interest of being, you know, someone changes, recommends changes to the regulations that. Just happen to benefit a building that they're going to be working on in two years. So there's.
Send you someone who's not, doesn't live here and is retired from Tru-X Collins.
Okay, sure. Yep.
Whether he or she would be interested, but, uh.
Yeah.
Person who really knows what they're doing.
Right. I am not related in that RFP process, so, uh, I'm not involved in that process. So I'm not sure where they are in the process, but I'm happy to receive any, any information you have.
Kelsey, I had one other thing that I think is quite urgent and should be sort of. Up at the top of our gen, and that is to get a tree ordinance done and enforced because the trees are going like. I don't know if you've seen what's going on on Kimball Avenue.
So this is the form-based code, uh, only. This is not our sort of broader work plan that we do have things like. Um, opening, reopening discussion with UVM tree ordinance, um. Presentation by the natural resources committee, a conservation committee is a. Tentatively scheduled for November. Um, so there are some, there are other things. S-one-hundred is, is obviously not in this list. Um, because that is actually not affecting the form-based code, um, very much if at all. So there are a lot of other things that are, are in our. Um, three to twelve month. Timeline that are not, this is just form-based code.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is when a draft comes to us. Can we deal with it very expeditiously before too many other trees are cut down? It's, it's really is urgent.
I'll agree with that. Sorry.
No, it's okay. It is, um. That's up to you. First, first of all, I'd say that's up to you. Um, what the natural, what I am, my understanding is the natural resources and conservation committee. Would like to come and present, um, sort of the skeleton of an idea in, uh, November. Um, they've. It may be pushed out to January based on their schedule, but that's on, on their schedule. I'm, I'm waiting to hear from them about that. Um, and then it will just, it just takes some, a little bit of time to write language because they wouldn't be presenting actual language at that meeting is my understanding.
Sure. It's my understanding they have a full draft. Language and all.
They have a draft that they have expressed to me is extremely rough and sort of bits and pieces from a lot of other municipalities that they like. But hasn't been kind of shaped into what it would need to be to go into our LDRs. Cause it's not, it wouldn't actually be an ordinance according to our city attorney. We couldn't actually do an, a separate ordinance without. Um, a charter change. So it would have to end up in our LDRs and therefore would have to fit into the whole system.
And the council do an ordinance?
No.
No. Can I do?
No. Um, okay. So there's a few other things for form-based code. There is an issue of, um, building facade requirements when a lot is surrounded by three roads. Either actual roads or official map roads or both. Um, there are probably four to five properties in the form-based code area that have that issue. Um, and what that means with, with our facade requirements and some of the build-two zones to the street is you could end up having. Requiring a building to be a triangle that matches the shape and footprint of their lot. Um, because it would have to be built to the road on all sides, um, which can cause. It's, it, it can be impossible depending on which, which lots we're talking about. So that's something else too that we need to address. Um, and there's a lot of different ways to sort of look at that and address it.
But the other. Do buildings have to be square or rectangular?
No. No, but some of these lots are on the larger side and you can't, you wouldn't really want a solid. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts in the regulations.
Assuming we're talking about primary streets and secondary streets and.
Yep. Yep. Um, to us, there is a potential partnership opportunity for, um, housing development related to the old city hall property. Um, there is some discussion that is required for that to happen. And then moving down past, so those are all sort of the next phase. In, into the next year, we're talking about, um, visioning for San Remo Drive and how, what that is, we want it to look like, how to enable that. Um, that is something we're applying for additional grant money to, to work on. Um, but that would be then awarded in sort of February, March. So that's something that would be starting kind of next summer. And then the bigger picture, and this is related to all these other things I'm talking about, sort of a big overview, review of. Um, what are the planned roads? What is, how has the development been going? What are our lessons from the first decade of the form-based code?
Quick question about San Remo. Is San Remo the, the part that we're talking about included in our, uh, city development area?
In the TIP district? Yes.
Yes. Okay. Cause it goes down Dorset. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's kind of a pork chop.
Okay.
Shape.
Chelsea, a quick question on that. Um, San Remo Drive Vision, then that's something that's going to be fleshed out. As, as we move along.
Yeah.
Um, with feedback from businesses and residents on that road?
Like the vision of what, yeah. So this, this is just starting the process of what, what do we as a community? And that's including city government, residents, business owners, current, current, um. Lesses of that, of that area, um, current businesses in that area. Other types of businesses who can't find space in South Burlington. Like there's all, there's a lot of other things. Other types of businesses who can't find space in South Burlington, like there's all, there's a lot of other things um that we would be bringing into that. Um so phase three, community conversations needed header is is what, what do we want to do with with San Remo?
I know there's kind of an industrial component there a little bit, which, you know, I I. I I worry that those people might feel like they're being pushed out, but that's, that's a discussion for further.
Yeah, this is just noting that that is a, a discussion that is likely upcoming in the next year.
Right.
Um, and then some, a few other regulation updates under discussion. Um S one hundred, as I said, there's not a lot that affects um form-based code. But we have, again, the potential needs for the U Mall property and Staples Plaza areas as they move forward. Um or if they move forward or when they move forward, so just keeping those things in in mind. Um general streamlining of the LDRs, that is my after-city plan, that is my next big sort of humming along in the background project. Um is to make our LDRs effective for the goals that we're trying to reach. And kind of strip out everything that is not necessary to meet those goals. Um and hopefully that will enable a lot of these other things to be more efficient and work better. And uh. Enable more small-scale redevelopment, cuz right now the the. The LDRs are complex and can be extremely difficult to navigate, especially for those who are not. Um well-versed in reading that kind of document. So we get a lot of redevelopment and development applications from large companies. And not as many, and not as many as we would like from smaller property owners, smaller um businesses, smaller. Um you know, people who own a residential property and wanna build an additional home or, you know, all sorts of things. Um making it more, a more accessible set of regulations. Uh ordinance updates, we're working internally on two updates, one to the sign ordinance and one to the peddler's ordinance. Um the sign ordinance now um works fairly well for a more car-focused and suburban-style environment. It works fairly poorly for a more urban and walkable environment. So um someone in our department is working on updating that and same with the peddler's ordinance. Um there's a lot of bits and pieces in there that inadvertently prevent small businesses and. Um you know, individual food carts or something like that, from preventing people from doing things that would help make. City center as vibrant a, a community gathering space as it could be. Um so those are two things that are happening internally. Yeah.
Just a question on the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
Cuz I know around the state, there's an awful lot of questions about um confusing language uh about how you light a sign.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of this stuff is, has been there for a long time and the technology's changed. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was gonna get covered because that's always a huge issue.
Yep.
Like, how do you light the signs and goosenecks with hundred watt equivalent light bulbs in it really doesn't cut it anymore, so.
Yep, I'm, I am not the one who's re, who's working on, on that, but that's my understanding is that's part of the whole scope. Because those are questions that we also have been getting when um properties look to add or change businesses. Or redevelop a property into multiple businesses, um what kinds of signs they can have and the um. Honestly, the, the sort of fashion in signs is different than it was when the sign ordinance was originally written. Um so trying to be able to meet those, those new styles of signs while still meeting the. Goals of having a side more, sign ordinance.
All right, so when they present that to us, you know.
No, the sign.
That to us or how are we?
The sign ordinance and the peddler's ordinance are ordinances, they do not come to the planning commission. They go to city council. Ordinances are not land development regulations.
Well, I guess then my question is, how does the sign ordinance get developed in order to accommodate all of them? Um lighting particular, particularly on the lighting side, cuz that's usually the part that gets people confused. Everything else is a little less confusing.
Yeah, I'm.
Terms of brightness, you know, it's like brightness of signs. It's like, I have had dozens of calls over the years from around the state. You know, asking, it's like, how do we meet this ordinance? And I said, well, you need, you need to have this kind of meter. Do you have one? And I said, I can't afford one. Does anybody in the state have one? No. So I'm just saying, don't use as criteria for brightness um a requirement that nobody can measure. Cuz that's currently what happens.
Okay.
Uh lumens don't really uh effectively deal with it because it's surface candela, the candellas. Uh it's, yeah, it's the surface candellas that are really the issue. It's the brightness, not the, not the amount of light. It's the visual brightness of the surface that's the question. And we don't have good ways of measuring that without about a ten thousand dollar tool.
Yep, so that's something that someone else in our department is working on. It will go to city council. And um I'm happy to let you all know when it's kind of moving, moving forward.
So this is on your list because we will, we will develop the language, but not vote on it, it'll go to the council.
We do not do anything on it. The city, the planning, this is, this is um.
Information.
Informational, that these are, this is, these are two other ordinances that are city regulations. That our department and the city council will be um working on to improve the visual and community. Um effect of the form-based code area. With the. Sorry, Ashley, when we um are open for public comment and questions, um we will let you know. We're just kind of running through our, our items now and then I'll let you know, or Duncan will let you know when um we have time for some, a public question. What was, I'm sorry, yeah.
This is on a different note, but I wanna go back to the potential needs for the U Mall.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't know where. Discussion is with staff and the U Mall, if it's happening at all right now.
Right at the minute, I don't think so. Um it kind of comes and goes and there's no movement at the moment as far as I know.
The reason I'm bringing that up is I hope that we can have this issue. Um in a timely manner so that we're making our decisions based on what we're hoping to see happen. Rather than being a reactionary uh. Action to something that's being brought forward, so.
Yeah, so.
Encourage that that, that that part of the agenda get. Accelerated because it is gonna be. An issue probably sooner than later, and I don't wanna be trying to play catch-up.
Yep, so the design um and um other related sort of visual updates to the form-based code. Are things that are moving along now. Um this bullet point here is specifically talking about. Additional needs for the U Mall site because it is fairly unique. Um as a redevelopment site, as a fairly large lot, as having many buildings on a single lot. There's a lot of things about it that are not currently compliant with our regulations. It couldn't be built the way it is built currently. If it came in from scratch today. Um one thing that you have just moved forward to city council is L-shaped roads. If the, if the U Mall decided to add a ro, an actual road through what's now its parking lot, it would have corners to it. So you've solved, I mean, you're moving it forward to city councils to solve one of those problems. But um there are likely going to be additional things that come up um when we're moving through some of these other updates that we think about. Oh, how will this apply to the U Mall and does it need to be um? Is there any tweaks required to make that work well? Um cuz as you said, we don't wanna be doing all these changes to the form-based code. Say we make a bunch of changes the next year and then. Weren't specifically thinking about the U Mall and they come in for some redevelopment proposal and we go, oh no, we actually have to change everything again because it didn't quite work. So just keeping the U Mall, Staples Plaza, some of these areas in our minds as, or in your minds. As we're moving forward with the form, the general form-based code updates to make sure that we're not um inadvertently creating obstacles to those sites.
Yeah, I I mean, one can imagine that we might, they might, building heights might be an issue.
Um lots of things.
And glazing standards might be an issue. I mean, tr, currently Transit One is kind of limited. Um I can imagine there, there might be quite a lot of work to do if uh we want, as Commissioner Smith says, we want. What they do to look the way we want it to look.
Yep, there's a lot of things to be keeping in mind. Um I think that's um Duncan, did you, that's all I had to really say about this agenda item. We've sort of been, I've been answering questions as we go, but um if you wanted to open it to.
Yeah, I know, Ryan, you had your hand up earlier. Um I don't know if you wanted to, no, no, okay, all right. Um I'm sorry. Ashley, you, you had, did you wanna comment?
Um, I was just thinking with sign brightness uh back wi, with photography. I, I would think that a cheap option would be to. You use a tape measure, go a certain distance away and use a simple camera light meter, like the old-fashioned analog light meter. Uh it might not be as accurate as what you were looking at. But if feasibility is a enormous roadblock, that could potentially be an option. Um and I was curious when, when you said that the signs are in good shape from the road. I, I'm not sure that you're allowed to go into that, but I was curious what that meant. Because sign visibility is not been something I've liked since I've moved here. Um it's. Some places you have to be right on top of them to see where you're supposed to turn in.
Is that, Ashley, what, what, are you talking about road signs or are you commercial signs? What are you talking about?
Um I think you mean the commercial signs. Uh cuz you were talking about the brightness of them, but I assume you're also talking about the size of fonts and the height off of the road. And maybe keeping.
Yeah, Ashley, all I, what I was really saying is that the signs, um the sign regulations and their design is oriented toward cars. Instead of pedestrians, so like signs would be pointing towards the parking lot instead of um an access sidewalk. Or um if, if you think about like uh Main Street in Main Street or Church. Think about, if you think about Church Street in Burlington, you have a lot of signs that are sticking out from the building. So if you're walking down Church Street, you can see the buildings and that you can see the signs well before you reach the building and look at it sideways. Um in South Burlington, that's currently not allowed to be sticking out from a building like that. So it's not oriented for pedestrians, it's oriented for someone who has parked and, you know, parked in front of a building and is looking at the facade. Um so that's really what I was saying.
Right next door, it doesn't work at all.
Right, exactly. So it's, it's more that, that it's oriented for people who are parking in a parking lot and looking for where they're going. Instead of the people who are walking or biking on a path.
Nice change.
Thank you, Ashley. Um, all right. Number eight. Um updates to form-based code outcomes discussion. Um there were two bullet points here that we were asked to think about. Um. I don't know if the best uh way to go out would be to have each counselor kind of give their two cents and then go from there. Does that sound okay with everybody? Yeah. All right.
Sure.
Michael, why don't, why don't we start down your end?
I'd start down at my end.
Yes.
Well, I'll, I'll start with a little history because uh. It's uh fundamentally what we've got on Market Street today is not at all what the public. Had asked for or and, and had somehow expected. Um I had a lot of. Sometimes hard discussions with people who wanted uh. A village, a New England village. Um and in the end, I suppose I had to say, well, if you want that, you have to buy the land because we don't own it. So, but I had high hopes that the form-based code would, would produce something a lot more imaginative and interesting. Than, than what we've got today. Um and something along the lines of um a Vermont, a small Vermont town. Um maybe buildings that aren't monolithic blocks as we see them here. Um but perhaps a little more traditional, but with newer materials, obviously different and better insulation. Um renewable energy possibilities. Uh the only really good-looking building on Market Street today is this one. And uh. I can only, I can only. Yes, no, I'm sure that it looks this way because it was designed by a firm of architects who are qualified. To do urban design. And so that's um, I guess what I would like to see. It's a bit late in many cases. But I'd like to see us have a requirement that uh any new building in the form-based code district. Must be uh designed, the, the owner of the land or the developer or the builder must engage a. Qualified urban architect, one with the expertise in urban design. Other than that, um I'd like to see Transit Two changed to have commercial on the ground floor. As we have here in Transit One. Uh.
This is T five.
Sorry.
We're in T five, you're talking about T four.
As, as we have in T five in, down in T four. T four and T five both have commercial on the ground floor. Um what we, what we see down in T five is, uh T four is not really very attractive. And the buildings lack imagination, they lack outside space. There is not a single balcony in the whole place here. Um and I think that's one of the things, uh former Commissioner Ostby fought very hard for open outdoor space. In every possible way. Um I do not know where uh the residents of these buildings will, will have outside space. There will be a greenway down the southern side of Garden Street. But immediately adjacent to these buildings, there doesn't appear to be any open space for those who live there. And the, the balconies are a serious um shortcoming, I think. If you look around in many towns, uh not, and all over the world, a lot of places, they do have balconies. People have potted plants out in the summer, they, it's just, it's just a terrible, terrible uh loss. That we've, we don't have that here. Um so from here on in, I would really like to see us um have the buildings that are a little more imaginative. Some variety, certainly balconies. Um. Maybe bigger windows. Um but not this monolithic rectangular blocks. That we see all of them here so far except this building.
So you like it?
Laurie. Um, I'm new on the commission and getting up to speed on form-based code, et cetera. Um so I don't have a lot to say, but I think. I agree with a lot of what Michael said and when I think about city center, I think about um. I think about the center of Bristol, I think about a lot of areas that, if, Michael just had up at the, at the good New York. Think about the downtowns that are like, that's really inviting, I really wanna be there. And then I think about Taft's Corners where on two A, they've done all those nice little buildings. That look like they would be um. City downtown buildings, but they're on, next to a busy street with a, I mean, it, it doesn't even come close to creating the feel. So there's the issue of the building structures themselves and how we scale them so that the facades aren't these massive things. And they have a more quaint and inviting feel, but there's also the whole streetscape and the whole layout. That really um either creates the feeling of these quaint little buildings with a. With a busy road going through them or actually a downtown. And so I think we need to look at the big picture of the code. Not just the, not just the building faces. That's what I have to say.
Paul, I know that you uh, you were involved in the beginning of this process, so maybe you can give us some history on that and some overview and go from there.
Sure, um. Well, uh first thing I have is a question. This is T five here.
Mm-hmm.
How did it become T five?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
It was from the.
We made it T five.
Yeah.
Who did? The commission, planning commission? No, the form-based code committee. No, there's no T five anywhere.
Yes.
I mean, there is now because you say so, but I mean, T five is like Times Square or something like that, you know? Um, okay, so um where to start? Uh indeed.
Uh, indeed, I was the first chair of the Form Based Code Committee. Um, I would say it was my idea, I picked the people who are on the committee. And um. And we hired a great consultant who. Uh, I was interested in, I was interested in the consultant Paul Drayer. Because. When I was on the city council, which was at that time. I just could not understand our land development regulations. I'm delighted that we're talking about streamlining them, like to streamline them down to about fifty pages if we could get to fifty, that would be great. Um, but um. But I had a meeting with Paul and um we talked for a couple hours in the old city home. And for the first time in, you know, my life, I guess, I understood. Uh, land development regulations and I understood it in the context of form-based code. So. I was delighted about this and excited about it and. Brought it to the council at the time, uh, and we were in interim zoning. And um we established a um. Form-based code committee. And hired Paul to be the consultant. And I hope that we hire Paul to be the consultant again. Paul has an architectural degree from, he's an architect, has an architectural degree from MIT. He understands our form-based code because he developed our form-based code. Um, I don't think he has any. Conflicts of interest at all, I don't think he's involved in building any buildings or anything. Uh, he worked with Jesse uh Baker and Winiski, I think Jesse actually, he was a consultant for a while. And then Jesse hired him onto her staff. So he's responsible for building a lot of that development that's taking place in Winiski. We had a very difficult time with the staff when we were. Uh, meeting as a form-based code committee. It was really a battle, tooth and nail every bit of the way. And we eventually. Were defeated. I mean, basically, I would say that.
Would you put the mic a little closer?
Okay, I was, we were defeated and. We um. Uh, I lost uh the city council race, so I was gone and I was gone as chair. And um. Uh, and then the, the. Difficult relationship continued and eventually the staff prevailed. And has built what has been built as. Uh, city center, uh, and it was, you know, nothing that we envisioned. The form that we envisioned, as Michael said, was the form of. New England cities and towns and. Uh, throughout New England and especially here in Vermont. But we all know what these towns look like, you know, they. Are Montpelier and Regens and St. Albans and St. Johnsbury and. Um, you know, uh. Nineteenth century uh buildings, um brick facades. Upstairs, uh, usually apartments. Sometimes nowadays condos. Downstairs, uh, doors from shops and stores and restaurants under the street. Glass front on the first floor. Um, and they're what we think of as a downtown or an upstreet using Vermont language. And um. They uh uh build community, I mean, they are community, they're the community that. We know of as uh. You know, as our human community, um, or our New England community. So that's what we were looking for, we were looking for that kind of look that. Nineteenth century, you know, that we would look like the other towns and cities. Um, only we would be uh built in the twenty-first century and not in the nineteenth century. And the advantage of being built in the twenty-first century would be that. These buildings that would look like nineteenth century buildings. Would have twenty-first century technology and twenty-first century uh. Um, building techniques. And we actually hoped that this would be such an extraordinary thing that um. That uh it would become one of the Vermont attractions that, you know. If you've been to Vermont and you've seen city center in Burlington, then you've really been to Vermont cuz that's the real thing. Um, and uh. You know, that we'd be like Ben and Jerry's, you know, known around the world even, you know, so. We had great hopes and great expectations. Uh, and I think we could have done it, I think we, you know. You did adhere to the plan, I think that's what we would have had. So uh. I don't know that it can be reclaimed at this point, I don't know, I mean, we've got. We've got basically, I would say, a modern city. So I don't know how a modern city fits into Vermont, that remains to be seen, but. You know, it's not something that people are gonna leave Bethesda, Maryland to come and see, you know, because they've got the same thing in Bethesda, Maryland. So uh, I hope we really take a deep dive in this and see what we're gonna do. Uh, the uh. The San Remo Drive area hasn't been developed, so to speak yet. And you know, we hear talk about that being our Soho or something, I don't know. At this point, if we deserve a Soho, but. But that's something that we can look at as a place that we could maybe develop like that. I don't know, I mean, it's not. It's a place that has buildings that are buildings are not that tight, you know, it'd have, it'd have to be quite a rebuild. But uh. So, you know, that's my uh sad story, but uh. I really would hope we can really take a look at this and see what we can do. And that we get uh. We get some good advice from good people about what can be done, so, thanks.
Thank you, Paul. I'll give you my quick feedback, I, I, as you guys know, I have a store in the Blue Mall. In the back of my store, the door opens and looks pretty much at that property. Yeah, and I've been walking out that door for thirty years. Looking at that property. Um, and nothing was happening on that property. Um, so. I hear what you're saying, Paul. I think it's. In my mind, it's kind of hard to replicate downtown Bristol or downtown, you know, Ithaca. Here, we've never had that, we have never had a downtown. Um, and I think that was one of the big impulses is to try to develop something like that. You know, I, I would agree in that what we've gotten so far is. Not real aesthetically beautiful, um, but Kelsey had a very good point, she said that, you know, that, that. Uh, building that's further down the T four um was the first one built, so that was the first thing we got to see. Yeah, it's an ugly duckling. Uh, it has no. No, that way. I'm talking that way, you, you know, the building I speak of, Michael, you, you have a nice name for it. But uh. But my hope is that as more things get built, it'll start to look. A little bit better, I mean, I, I think of, to me, I think of the building that Joe Larkin built down on Shelvin Road. But you know, that, to me, that, 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 that is a. Perfect mixed-use building, um, who looks very nice. Um, very inviting, very open for bottom floors for all the businesses. Um, that, to me, that's, that's what we're looking for. So hopefully we'll get some more of that, um, but we also, the other thing, and I thought about this. You know, that ugly duckling building down there, that's important housing for a lot of people. You know, and we, we disparage the building, but we still have to remember that it's, you know, we need housing. Yeah, do, do we necessarily want to look like that? I mean, that, that building has no interface with the street. And I drive by it almost every day. You know, and that's, it's, it's pretty brutal. It's just kind of street sidewalk building. Nothing, um, but. Um, hopefully, you know, we, we can look at what we've got and take some of the feedback and, you know. Improve on it. Uh, but I, 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 I think that to, to expect to have a nineteenth century downtown is. I, I just don't think that's realistic in South Burlington. You know, considering, you know, that we've ever had one. The other thing too is. Um, I think it's hard to underestimate how big. A factor, what goes on with the U-Mall property is gonna have too. Um, and I, I know that what, when I first came on the commission a while ago, we had a uh. Form-based code subcommittee, we were working with some of the developers, Snyder Braverman. It's my other folks, Paul, myself and a couple of commissioners were meeting with them. Uh, what, what were the issues that it up? And one of the big issues they had, and I, I got it, um, was market for that commercial on the first floor. You know, if you're gonna build all this stuff and it sits vacant. That doesn't work, so I think a big part of that is what's gonna happen over there. Um, and you know, we, we don't know that yet, uh, we don't know what the owners of the mall are gonna propose. Uh, so I think that, that's, that's a big piece of the puzzle that's kind of unknown. Um, but. Um, yeah, it's not perfect, it's not what everybody wanted, but again, I, I, I think that. It's still a work in progress, so let's, let's not kick the can down the road too far.
I've been scribbling like mad over here, making, making notes on, on some of your comments, so um, here goes. I think that given, given that the form-based code, the document that it was, I think you got what you, you know, asked for. So I'm not so sure why the confusion about. You know, like why it doesn't look a certain way, I mean, this was, this was pretty much what was allowed, but. I'd say that the, the difficulty with the way form base code was approached here. Was that, you know, if you really wanted something to look a certain way and be economically feasible. You should have gone further into actually designing what you wanted. As opposed to just putting blocks there. Um, I think one of the biggest problems is we currently have all large buildings there. And you know, you can have large buildings, they can break down the facade. Uh, to make it visually look less blocky, but it's still a large block building. You, you do have lots of lots left. And I think, you know, I think in talking with Alana, I said, look, I think that there's gonna be a lot of people. Some um, small business owners who would love to build, love to buy. You know, a relatively small lot to build, you know, a three or four-story building on it. For their own home and office use, you know, and that's the kind of texture that's lacking right now is like. The mix of commercial and residential, and that's a very current uh approach too, which. Which is to, you know, design houses that have in work, you know, working space. As, as a component of it, so it's, it's realistic from a marketing standpoint, and I don't think it's too late to do that. Because there isn't, there are lots still left, but you know, somehow the developer is gonna have to be convinced. To sell these small lots and, you know, not. You know, I mean, they've gotten the big buildings built, they financed a lot of stuff, you know, the TIF. TIF is well on its way, I think, given all the constraints, you got what you should have expected. You know, cuz that's, that's what, that's what, that's what it was. Um, I do think you, you, you need to have a better mix of building footprints. I, I think that, you know, you've got large buildings there, there, there was no reason to expect anything but large buildings to get it built so quickly. Um, but, you know, I'd, I'd say the same thing could happen if you started selling lots. Uh, and a, and a builder said, look, we're gonna sell these lots and this is what, you know, this is generally what we're putting up there. You could still get your brick facades, if, you know, if you have smaller buildings. At least, at least the front facade, because you know, these should be, these should be zero plotline buildings, you know, they should be. Um, Back Bay Boston style buildings, maybe wouldn't be as ornamental because, you know, we aren't in the. Eighteenth and seventeenth, nineteenth century, so it is very difficult to build that way now, but there are modern ways of doing things that. You could certainly get the aesthetic, you know, some aesthetic interest. Um, urban landscape, urban landscape texture, I think that's largely what's lacking, I went to all of those meetings. We talked about how, you know, you have to have urban passages, you need to have courtyards. Um, I was in Andalusia, Spain, and I was absolutely delighted walking around these cities. Um, you're not allowed to build cities like that anymore because you have to have huge fire trucks being able to get around every building. Believe me, that. You, you aren't gonna get a nice, a nice um townscape. When, when that's required, not of any scale anyway, you know, you have these two big openings between buildings. And, you know, maybe you need to have some negotiations with. The fire inspector and say, look, what's practical here, they don't tend to give way, so. If you, you're getting what you get because that's what the building codes. Basically require in terms of fire. Fire protection and things like that, but you can still have urban landscape texture even with larger buildings. Um, but you have to focus on what's happening at the ground level, you really have to focus on the landscaping. Um, and, you know, create a texture, um, it's not too late to make. Things kind of bring a mix of textures. Uh, but I think you have to really kind of look at it as, as a design. Um, problem at this point and not just say, oh, form-based code. You know, we're gonna come up with some general planning guidelines and let the, let the architects take it from there, I think. I think that, you know, that, that goose has flown. You know, you've already tried that and it didn't work the way you wanted it to, so you have to get a little more specific. Um, and, you know, work with the, work with the uh developers and say, look. We need, we need to have a design solution. And maybe you'll get some more owners who are interested in owning this if you have some smaller properties uh to put down. Um, there are way too many flush facades, two little setbacks, you definitely need balconies. It's uh. You know, just creating texture in modern, energy-efficient buildings is really tough. Um, so everything that efficiency Vermont tells you to do works against what Paul wants, absolutely everything. I worked in Pittsburgh for many years, Pittsburgh is a brick town. It is extremely difficult to create a rain screen. With a brick facade, you know, unless it's pasted on brick, you know, just fake brick. It's just really, really hard to build that way efficiently. But um, and it's expensive too, that's why I think the smaller buildings, the owner-occupied buildings would, would give you a better chance to get that. Um, also, brick is not an indigenous material, it used to be, but it's not anymore, brick is really, really expensive now. But we have stone, we have lots of modern composite materials that, you know. Are made of stone, but they're chopped up first. But, but you can get that, you can get the look and the texture you want. Um, the market centers that I think I look, looked at as um examples. There's a market square in Ottawa, which I just thought was amazing, it's a little smaller, it's a little smaller scale. Uh, than this, but it's just the most lively um place in a very similar part of town, it's kind of surrounded by. Late industrial and residential, it's in, it's not in the middle of town, but it really. It does really attract people because of what it offers there. And, you know, I kind of imagined that the center of this could have been like a, an open market type, type building. Um, that now Burlington's talking about doing something like that, and I'm like, why can't we, why couldn't we have done that? Um, you know, but that would have been the center. Um, of something. Um, Pittsburgh also has a, a much higher scale market, market square, it's actually called Market Square. Which is really nice, it's an urban park, um, and it's surrounded by really, really busy. Uh, restaurants and things and the PPG Center is on one side of it, so. You can, you can make successful urban places, but um you have to design them. Kind of reiterating what somebody said about, like, you know, I, I, I have walked around these buildings at different times a day and I do feel uncomfortable. Walking around some of them because I don't think that's what they're intended to be permanently, but right now I see these little stoops right off the, right off the sidewalk and I'm like. Who, who's using that, you know, it's like, this is, this doesn't feel right to me, security seems like an issue. Um, with some of these, some of these many side entrances that you have off of some of these buildings. And um. So I just, I just think uh that form-based code, you know, it's um. You gotta, you gotta get further into design at this point and say exactly what you want. And create some of those urban passageways and, and a little. And create some of those urban passageways and and little courtyards and spaces that make spaces really delightful. Um, but get the fire mar, get the fire marshal to kind of say, look. Can can we do this? And if he, if he says yes, I would be amazed. Cuz I think the fire codes don't let you build really nice buildings anymore, you know. Unless you're in New York City, because they have ways of doing it there magically. I don't know. I don't know how they do it, cuz I've never done a building in New York City. Um, I've only done boring suburban stuff and and they're awful. I'll admit it. They're not great buildings. Anyway, that's my ten cents worth.
Thank you, Donna. Uh, Fran.
Okay, um, being new to the planning commission, um, I'm really. Don't have good background on the form-based code and the discussions. But uh, my sense of, you know, is um, a downtown. Is that uh, the the older downtowns that that people. Are nostalgic about in a way. The the buildings are small buildings. There's not a big block, one building that's a big facade. And I think the the uh, city center has a lot of large lots. And therefore, uh, large buildings. And I I I just think. That they're they're uh, with the large building and it it's probably the construction materials and the cost of construction that that drives that. If the lots are big lots. Then you're gonna get uh, kind of a uniform feel for a big distance of the sidewalk. And uh, I I agree with with Donna that, that that the uh, the way that. Uh, it's approached is, how do, what do we wanna see for a design? Because uh, I think it will always be that the the buildings are uh, big. And that they are long, and unless we can break those up in some fashion by having input to the the way we want it designed. Uh, we'll get the the uh. Uh, something similar to, as to what we have. And a- at this point, it's hard, there there's two new buildings under construction, so you don't get a feel. From uh, walking east on Market Street from uh, City Hall. But I I I I think those new buildings on both sides, just east of City Hall. Aren't gonna make the space better. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Fran. Um, Ashley, I'm I'm not ignoring you. I'm try, we're gonna finish the conversation and then we'll open it up. Who who had their hand up first?
Michael did. All right, Michael, we'll go to you.
I had just a follow-up. Uh, to put it in context, um. First of all, the form-based code committee had sixteen members on it. All with competing. Ideas. And it's so it's unsurprising that we ended up with a camel. Which, as you know, is a horse designed by a committee. But we, we also had a consultant who impressed on us that. Form-based code is to create a sense of place. And the sense of place is bordered by the buildings. It's the street, the space between the buildings, and if those are. What we see today, it's not a kind of place that will draw people. We were. I personally hope that this would become a major tourist attraction and draw. People away from Burlington to South Burlington, uh, because we've got a lot of other things that could. That people will be drawn to once they're here through this gateway. So the sense of place is missing. I agree with with Donna that, you know, we. Landscape, uh, urban landscaping is is a requirement, and there must be some design standards, but they're very, very difficult to. Define because they're subjective to a large extent. And I'm, I'm hopeful that our urban design architect consultant will will help us with that. But we don't have that sense of place, that key element from form-based code is missing. And what we have. Hey, it's our own fault. We didn't go to the DRB meetings and monitor these things and object. Or make suggestions that would improve the looks of these buildings. So to some extent, we got what we asked for as. Donna said, that's that's, that they've they've complied with the rules, but just didn't want to do anything interesting. Because they did it the cheapest way they could, and they complied with the rules. So we have to change the rules. And we do, we do have now space. We have. Perhaps the future redevelopment of the Blue Mall will kick him out of his premises. And we. Have land, uh, we we, I hope one day we'll have a village green. There'll be, that'll make a huge difference to the the feel of the place. Uh, there's plenty of land. East of this next door building here. Uh, so we have an opportunity to to recover. I'm not, I don't feel hopeless. I just feel very. Frustrated and disappointed, but I'm not hopeless about it.
I just wanted to add that um. We're actually at a pretty difficult time. Economically and socially, to be trying to create a city center. And the building that Joe Larkin built on Shelburne Road. Is a very nice building, but if you look at it, you'll see that half of the commercial space is still empty. He, a little bit more of it's gotten filled, but but commercial ground floor. Since COVID has been something that developers are shying away from for very good reason. And it's gonna take. Some real forward thinking, um, envisioning. To. Figure out how we make this happen. And Donna, I love the idea of the, of the buildings that are. Owner-occupied businesses, et cetera. There are lots of things that can be done, but. We do need to recognize as we do this that. Developers do need to make money. It's getting harder and harder to do that. And to do it in a way that creates the kind of space that we all want. So it's a, it's a. It's not an easy solution.
Real quick, Donna, when the subcommittee I was on back when I first got on the uh. Land Commission, that that was one of the issues that developers had, and it made sense. I mean, they, you know, they. The issue was the permitted uses in the commercial, you know, could they. We we wanted restaurants and stores. They said, what could we do? Insurance offices and stuff. And there was some back and forth about, you know, what. What's feasible, what works. So that, you know, that that's something that I I totally agree with you, Laurie. That's, that's market-driven. And we we need to be aware of that.
Yeah, and um, I I don't know. People generally are aware, but um, the people flooding into this area, many of them are business owners. Many of them have their own businesses. They can be wherever they wanna be. And a lot of them have got tons of money. It's unbelievable what they're spending for houses. And yet, when you say to them, it's like, well. What if you had an option to have like a, a three or four story townhome? In the center city, that could be your business, office, and your home. And they were, and it's like the one guy who came to, he actually lives in my neighborhood. And he said, I would have jumped at that if I had a chance to buy that. He said, nothing exists like that around here. And I think that's a problem with the real estate industry, because they don't wanna build anything that doesn't already exist. And they're kind of missing a big mark, you know, they're missing a potential market. Of people who wanna own a piece of real estate. They don't wanna rent. People do not all wanna rent, because when they're cash rich, they've got the money. You know, and we're not giving them any options, you know, oh, we wanna take your money for now till eternity paying rent. Well, they don't wanna pay rent. They want their own building. So why can't we give them an opportunity by dividing up some smaller lots? And let them build their own building with some nice guidelines on finishes and things like that, but. You know, we need some diversity in that area, you know, architectural diversity. And I, I think that's one way to do it. Let let. Let people build, you know, build to their own needs.
Uh, I understand that uh, the developers wanna develop um. Housing and that the money now is in housing and it's not in commercial. Building, commercial development. But at the same time. The little towns and cities that I mentioned before. I'm going through incredible revitalization. I mean. If you look at Regent's or you look at St. Albans, I mean, these have become vital places. With little shops, stores, restaurants. I mean, they're places that people wanna go to. I mean, even Winuski, you know, has been revitalized, you know. So, I mean, this idea that, you know. Shop stores and restaurants are a thing of the past, and that all, if we built city center like that, it would be boarded up. Just isn't born out by the reality of, you know, what you see in the other towns and cities around, around Vermont and New England. Um, uh, I think it's tragic when you go over to New York State, which is obviously quite different. And where you do see the towns a- a- and villages boarded up downtown. You know, there isn't any kind of, you know, small-time development like that. Um, but here we do have it, and it's working, and it could be working here too. Um, the eleven eighty-five building on Shelburne Road. I think, I think it's a great building. I I keep looking at it all the time in terms of how it's developing. It looks to me like it's full, you know. I mean, I think it's full now, you know. Uh, Blissby is in there, which is a really successful, popular place. What do you call it? The um. Salon from downtown uh, has moved in there.
O'Briens.
Oh, yeah. No, no, the the, you know, what's.
I think it's almost full.
What is it? No, no, it's the. It's got a name and a name of some, it's like, no, no. Anyway, so much for that. It is the chic in place to go. What were you saying?
I was just gonna say, it it did take. It did took them probably, I mean, how was that building, four or five years? So it took them probably four, at least four years to fill that commercial space, so that's.
Well, and but they're making money upstairs, you know. I mean, it's like, and they, and they do have balconies and, you know, I mean, it's like.
I think that's a.
Built the way you'd wanna building to build. I I think the bank across the street, the credit union. With the big glass front, I think that's a great-looking building.
And Larkin has a plan though, for that, for that commercial space. He's gonna have a housing development behind it, which is gonna be the custom for those businesses. Uh, so he's integrated what he's done on Shelburne Road. Behind at a hotel, oops, and a cinema. So the those commercial spaces will be well patronized, I think. Uh, I meant to say earlier that. When I said it, people wanted a New England-style town. It doesn't mean that they have to be nineteenth-century-designed building. They can be contemporary. It's a question of, I think, scale. You. Picked it up, Donna, that uh, we need smaller buildings, you know, not almost a whole block long, but. Uh, smaller lots, smaller buildings. There are so many examples in places in Manhattan, in Ottawa, in Montreal. Where brownstones in Manhattan, three-story brownstones have businesses. Like lawyers and doctors and who knows what on the street level. And people living above.
They happen everywhere and. You go along Route Seven, pretty much for blocks, several blocks, all of those. Originally, single-family large homes are businesses now. And it has to do with the cost of entry. You know, it's cheaper to buy an existing building and put a business in it than it is to start one from scratch today. Um, but, you know, given a great location, which I think Shelburne Road is arguably. From a visual standpoint, a much more, you know, commercially successful location than Market Street right now. My Market Street, once it has a lot of um, housing, which it's developing really fast. Eventually, it just takes a long time. Look at what happened in Winuski. I mean, it took, even though there's lots and lots of customers in all that housing, it took forever. To get businesses in the ground floor. I think it's just the nature of. New construction, you know, it just takes a long time to develop any character. Um, you know, cuz it's not, doesn't have the same texture, scale, and affordability of building, of buying an existing building. Especially buying one fifty years ago.
And can, do we need a timekeeper?
Yeah, um, I was just gonna say, we, Kelsey, we've given you plenty of feedback on uh, number one there. Number two was just, is there anything um? That.
We do need uh. Input from the.
Oh, good friend, did you?
I just read one other thing I wanted to say.
All right, go ahead, Paul.
Um, I just wanna stand up for the integrity of the work that we did back then. Um, as I said before, we were. Profoundly uh, opposed by the staff. Um, I see the work that's been done, the development that's happened, is the way the staff wanted to do it. Okay, the staff took over and did it the way they wanted to do it. It wasn't our recommendations that we somehow. Naively or foolishly allowed to become like this. The other thing that happened at that time was there was a profound political change. And those of us who had been involved in interim zoning were all kicked out of office. Uh, interim zoning was the scourge of the earth as far as the voters, I guess, were concerned. And um. So uh, and F thirty-five, I mean, it was F thirty-five and interim zoning. But that really put a stop to us, okay? So it wasn't that. It wasn't that our work wasn't good and that this has turned out the way it did because we didn't know what we were doing or something like that. Uh, it's, it happened because of political change and it happened because of resistance to what we were doing.
Okay. Did you want a number two? Did you want a quick feedback on that or?
Um, sure. So I just, yeah, the, a little bit of. Of just reframing the conversation. Um, this is not intended to be a. Reflection necessarily on what happened or what, how we got to where we are now, um. Process-wise, regulations-wise, it's more. We are where we are, and we need a vision for what it needs, we want it to be in the future, to be able to work towards a vision. It's, it's not. I'm not gonna say it's not relevant, but it's not core to the conversation, how we got to now. It's much more important um, to frame where we want to be in ten years and in twenty years. Um, so just keeping that in everyone's mind as we, as we talk about this a little bit more. Um, the second question is really related to the first. Uh, I outlined in the previous agenda item. What we're looking at, um, and what we recommended working on in the next year or so. Um, in the form-based code area, as I said, there's a lot of other things that we're doing that's citywide. Um, or otherwise outside of the form-based code or not form-based code-specific, but based on. Your thoughts about this conversation or your thoughts about how the form-based code area should be or the city center area. Should look in the future. Um, are there any additional projects? Like, we've, we've talked about San Remo Drive. We've talked about the, you know. T four, T five area. We talked about the, and we've highlighted the eastern end of Market Street. Are there other things in the form-based code that you would like us to be considering? Or to be sort of figuring out how to tackle as projects?
Perhaps.
What's that? Ashley, did you have a, uh, some feedback on that first thing we were talking about there?
Well, I did. Um, actually, I lived in an area called Avalon Park in Orlando, Florida. It was modeled after Celebration, Florida. It was a city, a small city within Orlando built by Disney. And both of those, they were literally a, a bunch of facades. You don't necessarily wanna live in a truly brick-built, how it used to be built place. Uh, the, even if a lot of us want it, but the feasibility and the cost of it. Can be a huge problem. Um, but you. When it comes to. Like the two sides fighting with each other, sometimes making a completely fake facade on a building. Where a building may look like it's a lot smaller than it really is. Um, even if you go all the way as far as looking at Disney's own thing, which, like, I think their. Main street in. I don't remember which park. Uh, you enter. And there's actual real offices up there. There are shops downstairs, but. The outside has no correlation to what's on the inside whatsoever. Long-term, doing little things like having balconies or large. Long-term, doing little things like having balconies or large windows is. Gonna pay dividends, I think, for the city, even though it's gonna be costly in the short term. I don't think it's a lot, and just, I know we're not supposed to focus on mood, but nothing is a lost cause. Uh, I moved up here just last year from a very high inflation, beautiful area that was growing. And I had to spend. What I last spent on a house in addition to all that inflated value to be able to live here. Um, you have more going for you than you realize and compared to Burlington. Uh, you still have room to grow, you still have additional progress and. Market Street, it wasn't exactly quintessential, but you still have those little quintessential condos when you're leaving it on the right. And. If you hire an architect, you gotta tell them specifically that you do want. A style, show them photos of what you want it to look like on the outside. And they can fake it and do that, but, yeah, just cause they've studied it, doesn't mean that their. Taste is the same as yours. I'm getting, you're cracking up at it and I, I think some people do wanna subdivide and own that. A lot of people want to be in control of the property and that's why they wanna own it. Lastly, the, the ground floors, can you not make them convertible so that. If they're temporarily housing, they can be turned back into a, a commercial space. As the market allows. Because while you may not be able to use the glass front of the windows. A lot could be done, quote, behind the scenes, so that. You can get money for the space now, but you can still convert it back into the long-term picture. Down the road and I believe when I was looking to move here, there was some research. The university actually helps Church Street and walkability. Uh, there was, I was studying something about how, how some towns can pull it off and some towns can't. We have so many students in the area. And as a room, and having that room for growth, I think you might be able to pull it off here. That's, that's basically it.
Ashley, what was the name of the place, the development in Florida you mentioned at the beginning?
The first one was called Celebration.
Celebration, yeah, I've been there.
Isn't that like three thousand four hundred or three thousand eight hundred units in that?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, literally, uh. When I was describing where I was moving, I would tell people. The city and the next city are about the size of the land that Disney owns. Uh, combined, not all the built-up part, but so, yeah, so our entire metro. I don't know if we're a metro metropolitan area or not. Um, I love, I can get anywhere in fifteen minutes. No more hour and a half to come home from the eye doctor. And the, another one that was built off of copied Celebration Florida was Avalon Park. Uh, they did that purposely because it was right next to a power plant. It turns out, miss.
Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate your feedback. So in terms of number two, um, I guess, is there anything, uh, the list is up above? Um, is there anything that somebody?
Specifics you're looking for?
Um, and any, I think you're looking.
Yeah, and target areas, target topics, things that we haven't spoken about that you would want to be addressed. In the, specifically in the next year or so.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I was, might, we might look to change would be the. The length of the side of the building on, on the street, it can go.
So, so, sorry, I don't mean, um, how to, the mechanisms to get the visual outcome you want, but. We're talking about, we're focusing, we're doing some focusing on San Remo Drive, we're doing some focusing on the east end of Market Street, like. Are there other geographic areas, are there other?
Yeah, we're, we're not looking for technical stuff.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Donna. Potential blocks north of, uh, Williston Road.
Sure, that's a, that's a good example, is that, yeah.
Cause I, I think that would be an important area because trying to link across Williston Road. It's gonna be useful to have. Design standards or standards for, you know, not just city center, but exactly what's opposite. On the opposite side of Williston Road from it. Um, I, I see that whole thing is, is kind of key to tying things together. Especially making Williston Road more. Urban-friendly, walkable.
Another piece that I think needs to be considered as we look at all these different areas is. Pedestrian connectivity between them all. And we developed San Remo Drive. How do pedestrians get easily from there to the city center? The bridge that's going across I eighty-nine is gonna be fantastic for connecting. UVM to city center, it makes it almost closer than downtown Burlington. But they still have to get across Spear Street. And just as we're doing all of these things, we need to think about. The pedestrian connectivity, cause we're trying to get people out of cars, we're trying to make it so there's easy connection as they're just a little shuttle. However, we do it, but that. That connectivity should be a real core piece of the development plan. Otherwise, people are gonna still be using their cars.
And actually across the U-Mall as well.
Yes.
Um, because, you know, I, I don't think you wanna just leave that up to developer's proposal, although the previous owner. Of the development did have some pretty good ideas about establishing connectivity. Uh, from the bridge, cause it was under discussion.
So the connections from the bridge do appear in the, um, city plan maps. And is proposed for update, updates to the official map, so there's, there's two. From the landing of where the bridge would come in, one going sort of more north towards the intersection of Will, Williston and Dorset and one cutting. More across where you, like parking garage area is. So tho- those from the bridge, specifically the ones from the bridge have been mapped.
Yeah, cause there was, there was some good, there was a very good proposal back when the previous developer owned it. And I, I think it would be nice to get some of that established in planning. You know, with a, with flexibility, of course, as to uses and that, but you know, what kind of density? How do you utilize if, you know, if at all possible, cause this, this is a big issue right now. How do you repurpose malls? It's a tricky question, but, you know, it's like the most innovative architecture happens from things like that.
And it's been done.
And it's been done.
That was one thing I was gonna, um, speak to and I, I think I, I can't emphasize enough that, that. The future of that U-Mall property really is gonna have a huge, huge effect. Um, and I don't know, Helen, maybe this is a question for you, I hate to put you on the spot. Communication with the developer, um, I, I don't know where, if, if we have any sort of liaison with them or, but. Sorry, I, I didn't mean to pull you out of your seat there.
Helen, really, I'm the council liaison to planet commission. Uh, my understanding is that, um, Jesse and Paul are in, I don't know if I would call it constant. Uh, communication, but it's very frequent with the owners, so I think they are trying to stay on top of that. I think obviously the challenge is, we don't own the land.
Yeah.
They do, and so you need to work with them. And I would also agree that the plan that we, we saw years ago was really pretty exciting. And that was a, a mall owner who appeared to wanna really work with the city, so I'm hoping that this new. The new owners will want to as well.
Good, well, I'm, I'm glad we're having communications with them, because that, that my fear would be that, you know. The two sides are operating in the dark and then the proposal comes forward and we go, whoa.
Right, no, no, I think everyone believes that that's important, I just hope it happens. We only have so much control.
Yeah.
Or influence, but.
Thank you, Helen.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Um, in terms of things that I think the city should be considering. I think that you do need to look at how you're going to get shop stores and restaurants into this part of city center. I think I've always thought that. That the center of city center will probably eventually be Dorset and Market. And that the other half of city center will be, uh, the redeveloped U-Mall, whatever they do with it. I mean, the better job they do, the better half of U-Mall it'll be. Uh, I mean, the better half of city center it'll be. But that's what I think, I mean, and I think that the connect, the bridge will come across to, you know, to that side of city center. It could work out really well. And there's the potential for a lot of shop stores and restaurants in that kind of development there. But I do think you need to look at stuff here too. And you've only got Price Chopper for all these people to shop or, you know, Trader Joe's or Healthy Living. Which are not, I mean, Trader Joe's and Healthy Living are probably more proximate, but. It's certainly a hike over to Price Chopper for senior citizens that live here to, to go grocery shopping, so I, you know, you need to get those kind of. You know, urban amenities, you know, a little closer to where people are living here, I think.
Yeah, it's interesting to see what's going on in Winuski right now, you know, because they are getting some pretty unique kind of retail in there, at first it was very low. You know, low, low rent kind of retail, but they have small grocery stores, they've got a lot of. I mean, even in Burlington, it's, you know, on, is that Pine Street? You know, some of, some of the things that are going in the lower levels of buildings, of stores there, it was surprising, you know, it's like. I don't know how many smoothie shops you can handle, but.
Yeah, right next to the dispensary.
Nobody knows Winuski better than Jessie Baker, cause she was the city manager there. Um, the other thing is we really need to talk to Mira Weinberger about where he gets his bricks. Some kind of great deal on bricks because. Burlington is bricks.
It's not just the bricks, it's the brick layers, because you have to go to Canada to get.
Did you write that down? Where the bricks are coming from in Burlington.
Possible that we could build with brick and that's all we build with in Burlington is brick, you know, I mean.
They're getting it from BHS. No kidding, sorry, Michael, you, you had it.
No, I was responding to Kelsey about the east end of Market Street where, yeah, we, there's plenty of space for. For something new and different, but it's, it'll, it's a transition zone really between transit three and four and. I think we have to be very careful how we define.
Yep.
Where, where one ends and the other starts.
Yep, so that's core to that project because there is really functionally. Because of the location of the, of the wetlands, um, to the east of the existing buildings. There is nowhere else in the city where a T three and a T four could be in the same building. Um, that's possible at that end of, um, Market Street because you could build a building that crosses the line and. And have a T four facade and then a T, a T three facade and a T four height in the back. So there's a lot of very specific opportunities in that area that are, um, only available in that area. Just because of how other development restrictions have come up in the rest of the, the other places where those two levels interact.
And we don't wanna overpower the folks on the other side of the street.
Right, so then it's a transition to Heinsberg Road and to the single-family homes, et cetera, on the east side of Heinsberg Road. And how all of that kind of works together in that area, so that's, that is the core of that big discussion.
Hold, hold on, Donna, hold, hold on a sec, Fran, we haven't heard from you in a while, did you have any feedback? Any, anything bad?
Well, I, I think the only thing would be, uh, uh, pedestrian connectivity. I think is really important, uh, we got the, uh, the bridge across, uh, I eighty-nine. But we're really just bringing them to U-Mall, then they can't get across Dorset. And then, uh, if we're gonna look at, uh, the north side of, uh, Williston Road. Some, uh, way to connect the pedestrians from, you know, city center across, uh, Williston Road, they're both. Really busy streets and, um, barriers. So, but, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Tom? Senior moment?
Thinking about what Fran had to say, so then I forgot what I was gonna say, it might come back to me.
Also, I should just point out, this is not, oh, go ahead.
You got it?
No, it was, it was a direct, it was a, oh, yes, um, that east end of Market Street. The changes in parking requirements under the residential S one hundred or Act forty-seven.
Yep.
Um, cause, I'm not, a long time ago, I, I saw one proposal for. That property and they just had, it just had a really hard time getting the park, meeting the parking requirements there, so. Uh, are some areas gonna be a little easier to, uh, to develop with reduced parking requirements?
Um, the form-based, not, there's not a lot of effect of the parking requirements from S one hundred. The form-based code area generally has, um, fairly, fairly low. Or, or no parking requirements, um, so it's not gonna be a big effect.
Okay.
Alright. Go ahead, Michael.
I was just wondering, uh, the, the connection of Midas to Mark, is that still on the books?
Yep.
And do we know when that's gonna happen?
No. Um, there are a few others, so there was voter approval for the, um, reconfiguration of the. What is currently Midas Drive and Williston Road intersection, including the intersection to White Street and how all that gets reorganized. So you have that, that project, the, the connection between current Garden Street and current. Uh, Midas Drive would be renaming Midas Drive to be Garden Street, it would be a continual road. Um, it, with the city owns a right of, technically, the Midas parking lot is a right-of-way that the city owns. Um, so it would be going through, through there, um, I don't have a timeline on when that infrastructure is, is intended to go in. My understanding is that. As far as I know personally, the reconfiguration of Williston and Garden has been funded, um, by. Or at least partially funded and approved by the voters as part of the tip, the tip district, so that's happening. Um, first and the, and the con- the connection of Garden. Through to the road between Trader, basically Garden connecting to itself. Um, and then after those things is when that, that last piece will come in. But I don't know any specifics.
I lost, because you mentioned that them, the other. North, north-going streets at the east end between. Between Garden and where Garden comes in and Heinsberg Road.
Oh, yeah, so it would be a fairly, it, it would be a fairly small, um, sort of. Corner street. More or less north of the existing triplexes, going straight north from there and then turning, um, before the back of the, like. Price Chopper and Walgreens Plaza, it will, it wouldn't go very far.
Does it have to cross that wetland?
Um, I don't think so, I haven't looked specifically at the site, um, but.
And who owns the forest down there on this side?
On which, which side? On the north side of the east end of Market Street? Privately, I don't know the, the actual owner, but it's privately owned, it's not a city.
That's a hardwood forest. So, a lot of it.
Alright, um, we're done pretty well on that one, uh, on to number nine, street name consideration and possible approval. You wanna give us any?
We're gonna work on infrastructure for things like cellphone service, Verizon told me that they actually are already maxed out bandwidth. And that combined with foliage is why I was getting one megabyte a second for the last, like, for much of the last four months.
Um, I don't know anything about any, um, work on the city end, that's, that's generally done. By the cell companies and, um, is federally regulated, so we actually don't have any power to do some of those regulations. But that is something definitely to note, as we have noted that in our city plan is that, um. is that um things like internet connection, high-speed internet and cell phone connection for our residents is um essential in, you know, twenty twenty-three and needs to be considered with some of these uh, when, when we're working on things moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, number nine. Um, yeah, so this is the street name request for naming the street going north from the intersection of Williston and Dorset. Um, they have proposed North Dorset Street, which makes logical sense and has no other conflicts um, with surrounding municipalities and consistent with Dorset Street. And um is consistent, again, with, if we're gonna go with New England things, it's, it's very consistent for New England towns to have north something and south something or north something and regular something as different parts of streets on either side of a major cross street. So, um, that's what they proposed and so now it's in, in your hands.
I move to accept the name North Dorset Street for the road continuing north from the intersection of Dorset Street and Williston Road.
Any discussion?
Gonna be a no-do, is it?
No, no, it is not. No-do and so-do, no, it is not. With, that'll get next to real quick. No doubt. Um, okay. We're, we're going down a rabbit hole here, people.
Can we put the both names on the street sign with the arrow instead of putting it on opposite sides of the road? Because anyone visiting from out of town, like coming to see their kids off to college and stuff, it gets really confusing if you have to look the one side to read one street sign and the other side, because as soon as I see one street, that's all.
Okay, duly noted on the signed ordinance. Um, okay, all in favor? Hi?
Alright.
I believe that was unanimous, Kelsey. North Dorset Street it is, not no-doe. And so, um, let's see, minutes. Um, everybody read them, they're good with them, do we have a motion to approve?
Michael, please turn on your microphone.
I move to approve the South Burlington Planning Commission meeting minutes of twenty-sixth September twenty twenty-three with one change on page four. It says that I felt there should be something in the beginning that says what a municipal plan is not. What I actually said is uh that this, there should be uh something in the plan, in the municipal plan that uh says what a municipal plan is and is not.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion to accept it with the direction from Mr. Mittag. So moved?
So I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hey.
Hi. Um, other business, Kelsey, did you?
I don't.
No, okay. Um, wow, thank you for the members of the public who attended, um, and I believe we are adjourned.
Thank you for bearing with. Thank you for being here, Ashley.